All right, we are calling the October 26th Petaluma City Schools Board of Education Meeting to order. Do we have any comments from the public on closed session items?
No public comments in the meeting.
Okay, we are going to adjourn to closed session.
Let's see back here.
All right, we are reconvening, I am echoing. We're reconvening the meeting at 6:03. First up, we have the public hearing of the California Voters Rights Act, so we are opening the public hearing at this time. Oh, at the end. All right. It's going to need a microphone.
So we just want to welcome Brandon, is it Laland?
Lalonde.
Lalonde, sorry, coming here from our attorney here from Triple F to talk about redistricting.
Hello, everyone, and welcome. My name is Brandon Lalonde, and I'm an attorney with Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost, and today we're going to have a public hearing on the CVRA, which is the California Voting Rights Act, and the purpose of today's public hearing is to receive any public input that the community has to offer before the demographer prepares the draft map options. Next slide, please. Before we get into any public comment on the CVRA and the draft map options, it's important first to take a look at what the CVRA is. This is a law that took effect in California in 2003, and it prohibits the use of an at-large election system when such a system either impairs the ability of a protected class to elect candidates of its choice, or its ability to influence the outcome of an election. The CVRA, which is the California counterpart to the Federal Voting Rights Act, is much broader than its federal counterpart because it does not require any showing of intent. So as we discussed at the last meeting, it's a very low bar for potential plaintiffs to bring successful CVRA claims against public entities, including school districts. The proof of intent, sorry, the proof of intent on the part of the voters or the elected officials, again, is not required. Another important point is that prevailing plaintiffs are entitled to attorney's fees, and as we all know, those can tend to rack up over the course of litigation, and in certain cases, public entities have spent over millions of dollars in defending these cases. But important to note, the Election Code specifically states that if the district wins or successfully defends against one of these claims, they are not entitled to attorney's fees. So it's a one-sided provision in the law. And now we're going to look at the by-trusty area election system. So what the district has right now is an at-large election system where all members of the board are elected from the entire constituency. A by-trusty area election system is where the district is divided up into parts, and then individuals or voters from those different districts vote for their own particular trustee. But it's important to note that no matter what area the trustee is representing, they represent the entire district as a whole. And it's important also to note that the board members are elected by only registered voters in the particular trustee area, so it doesn't really change the election rules The current step in the process, I think at the last board meeting, we adopted the resolution with intention to start the process, and the first step now is conducting two public hearings. We call it the pre-map stage, where before the district's demographer prepares the maps, we invite the public to make any comments and let us know about any communities of interest or dividing lines that the public think would make sense, because we don't really have that kind of intimate knowledge of the district, so we think it's best left up to members of the community. The type of feedback that we're looking for, I would like to keep Neighborhood X and Neighborhood Y together, for whatever reason, and a few of these public hearings, the maps that we've prepared or the demographer has prepared, we didn't have that sort of knowledge, so the maps kind of divided communities that shouldn't have been divided, and then we ended up having to make adjustments after the fact. I think maybe the 101, McDowell Boulevard, are perhaps good dividing lines that would make sense for the district, or maybe other areas would make sense because it seems like a good natural boundary, or it makes sense geographically, or based on the history of the district. Now, after this public hearing and the next public hearing, we're going to turn to the map drawing stage, and that's where the demographer is going to draw trustee area map plans using the 2020 census data, and it's important that the population be as equal as possible or as equal as practicable with up to a 10% variance between the largest trustee area and the smallest. This is the criteria that the demographer is going to look at and that the trustee should also consider in moving forward. The maps must comply with the U.S. Constitution, achieve population equality, comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, voting districts shall be contiguous, protect local communities of interest, try to keep the geography compact, and importantly, cannot favor or discriminate against an incumbent political candidate or political party. Final thoughts, again, this does not change the overall district boundaries, this does not change attendance boundaries, it does not change how the district is governed, it just changes the system of the election. Each board member will still represent the entire district, still one common district with common goals. This is a tentative schedule that we have had prepared. October 26th, which is today, would be the first pre-map public hearing. November 9th would be the second pre-map public hearing, and then moving into November, the first post-map public hearing, where things kind of start to make more sense, because at these first two hearings, we're just going to be talking in the abstract, but once you have the maps in front of you, that the date's highlighted in red, everything will start to make a little bit more sense. The second would be December 11th, 2021, and the final public hearing would be December 14th at 6:00 p.m., and then that's also when the district would vote up or down on the map that they select. Any questions or comments?
I just want to make sure it's clear for everybody listening, too. So we're, on October 12th, we did the 90-day safe harbor resolution, so we're right now within our 90-day safe harbor. Today's the first pre-map hearing, then we've got one more pre-map, three post-maps, and by December 14th, we'll still be within that 90-day window. Yeah.
Exactly, and the first two public hearings have to be within the 30 days of that resolution, so it has to be before November 12th, and then there'll be a 45-day window for the red meetings. And like you said, we're within the 90-day period, so everything, if we keep it as it is, is compliant with the law.
In your experience, how many draft map options are typically these?
Typically, three, sometimes two, sometimes four, just depending on the way that the district's shaped, and I think once the demographer is here, he'll have more answers to those questions on why three, why four, what makes sense. I think the most I've ever seen is five, but that's pretty common, is three.
And I'm still a little foggy on the practical aspects of developing these options, because the law is, the intent is to protect the interests of the protected class, but the mapping is a geography that's not based upon a demography.
True.
So how does that, I don't get how you can, how we can draw a geography that's based on a demography unless you assume that those protected classes were in the same geographies.
Yes, the demographer will also be using what's known as C-THAP data, which is an estimate, and it's not the census data, but it is a best estimate of racial breakdowns in the community, so he's also able to use that to, in an effort to increase the racial class of voting power in each one of the districts, and once we have the demographer, he'll be able to address that issue as well.
Okay.
And also, just to note that November 30th and December 11th are special board meetings, so not typically, we wouldn't typically have, but we will have it just for this purpose.
I just had a quick question. Did I hear you say that we could not accept any of the maps?
Yes, that is a possibility, in which case the process would either start over again, or the district would keep its at-large election system, in which case, at the end of the 90 days, they would be open to CVRA liability.
Is there a public comment on this hearing?
Yeah, we're about to go into public comment. Going to open it up for public comment.
Do we have any public comment on this part of the agenda?
I just have a minute.
Okay.
Great.
Maybe I'll read the spiel now, our board policy. Okay, while we're seeing if anyone has any public comment, I'm going to read our board policy for public comment. This will apply to all the public comment times. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute-per-person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. All right, so do we have any comments about the public, regarding the public hearing? I can't see that.
No.
All right. Okay, so, thank you very much. We are going to close the public hearing. Thank you.
And I'll be back the next public hearing, so if there's any questions between now and then, just let me know.
You'll do the same presentation, right? Each five meetings?
It'll be a little bit different.
Okay.
All right, moving on, adoption and approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, student of the month in semester time. So we have students of the month for Kennelworth, Petaluma Junior, Casa, and Petaluma High, as well as student of the semester and student report to the board for San Antonio High School. All right, so, looks like we have Kennelworth up first.
Hello, everybody, I'm Bennett Holly, I'm the principal of Kennelworth Junior High School. We're happy to be here tonight. Lila, I think you're going to go first. So our presenters this evening come from our leadership class, Lila Raider and Jessica Dodson, so you guys go ahead, take it away.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our October student of the month, Sofia Piazza. Sofia has been chosen for the student of the month by her teachers because she is an exemplary student full of curiosity and creativity. Sofia's teachers have had so many wonderful compliments to share about her. Mr. Quintura, Sofia's history teacher, says Sofia has been a wonderful student, always willing to share responses and contribute positively in classes' questions. She has completed excellent work and is definitely worthy of this award. Mr. Wright, Sofia's math teacher, agreed with this sentiment as he says Sofia is a positive role model in class, very hard worker, always contributing, and willing to offer another perspective in class on solving problems. Students that worked with her have said she is a great help. Ms. Bradley, Sofia's design lab teacher, has been very impressed with Sofia, as she states Sofia is an outstanding student who demonstrates many Kennelworth life skills. In design lab, she is starting to program her own computer game, and she has persevered through the many obstacles that come with programming. She demonstrates resourcefulness in how she responds to obstacles. She looks for online answers, she experiments on her own, and she reaches out to her classmates who have more programming experience than she does. Her curiosity, collaboration, and initiative are a joy to watch. Sofia is an engaged and curious student who takes zero period PE in order to be enrolled in both the design lab and KTV elective classes. Sofia has, takes on a personal interest in creating content, and has entered multiple film competitions. Sofia places a runner-up in the New York Times 15-second vocabulary video challenge competition, and placed third in a film competition through the Petaluma Library. Sofia's other hobbies include swimming, playing soccer, and she plans to try out for the girls volleyball team at Kennelworth. Sofia is a valued student in each of her classes, and Kennelworth is incredibly proud to call her one of our own students. Congratulations, Sofia, for your accomplishments.
Congratulations, Sofia.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our October student of the month, Kevin Hanson. The Kennelworth teachers have chosen Kevin for student of the month because of his academic achievements, wonderfully positive attitude, and willingness to always help others. Ms. Maneras, Kevin's Math 1 teacher, says Kevin is an excellent math student. Each day, he puts his best effort into each and every assignment. Kevin is always polite and friendly in class. In addition, Kevin works well with his partners, always stick on task and offering help when needed. Ms. Crozier shared Kevin is a positive role model to his peers. He's organized, kind, and motivated. He exceeds expectations and is a pleasure to have in class. Mr. Raya, Kevin's a teacher for KTV and history, says Kevin is awesome, he's a great teammate, participant, and individual worker. He shows initiative and he is intuitive, he's compassionate and patient, he handles stressful situations well and helps others through those situations. I'm lucky to have him as a student in both KTV and history. Kevin is academically excellent student, maintaining a 4.0 GPA in both 7th and 8th grade, all while enrolled in an academically rigorous class schedule, including advanced English and accelerated math. While Kevin's favorite classes are history and math, he shared that he really enjoys the challenge of Math 1. When Kevin is not spending time on his assignments, he enjoys playing for local traveling basketball and soccer leagues. Kevin also enjoys spending time with his younger brother because they have many shared interests, including sports and video games. After attending Casa Grande High School, Kevin has future goals for attending a prestigious college and possibly pursuing a career in the field of engineering. Good luck in everything you do, Kevin, we know you'll go far. Congratulations, Kevin, for your accomplishments.
All right, congratulations, and thank you both for reading. Great job. All right, so we are going to move on to Petaluma Junior High School.
All right, Soren, do you want to start for us, please?
Sure. We are honored to present Jake Garzoli as one of our October 2021 students of the month. Jake was born in nearby Santa Rosa on April 24th, 2008, and has been with the district since kindergarten. Despite his challenges with dyslexia, Jake is an enthusiastic learner and is continually looking to improve his spelling and language skills. He looks forward to extensive travel and hopes to become fluent in Spanish, Hindi, and Arabic. Academically, Jake works hard. Because of his learning difference, it takes Jake longer to read and write than most students. Yet he boasts an impressive transcript with all As and A pluses in some of our most challenging classes. His science teacher comments Jake is a great addition to 5th-period science. He's always polite, respectful, and helpful to others. As PE teacher adds, Jake is consistent with his effort in class. He participates well and often volunteers to be an example or answer questions during class discussions. Jake participates in a variety of activities outside of school. He plays soccer. Last year, Jake was a member of the Drama and Books Club, and he looks forward to doing track and field this coming spring. As an elementary student, he was honored for his writing skills and received a Petaluma Young Writers Award. Jake even had the opportunity to write to President Barack Obama and received a letter back from the former leader in return. Jake is an awesome, curious, oh, sorry about that. Jake also enjoys coin collecting, hiking, fishing, and cooking. Jake's parents have this to say. Jake is an awesome, curious, kind, smart, and generous person. We're so proud of his accomplishments and are grateful for this award. Jake Garzoli is one of those all-around amazing students and has an excellent role model. We are proud to have Jake represent Petaluma Junior High School as a student of the month.
Thank you, Soren. Xavier, you want to present next, please?
Petaluma Junior High School is very excited to present Emma Walker as one of our October 2021 students of the month. Emma was born on May 12th, 2008, in nearby Santa Rosa. She is a natural leader and an awesome student athlete who has a wide variety of skills and interests. Emma understands that having a strong academic record will enable her to meet her goals more easily and plans to continue her scholastic efforts. She loves animals and hopes to become a veterinarian one day. Emma is a very engaged in school. She maintains excellent grades, has a very strong worth ethic, and loves to contribute to her perspective in class. Her math teacher says, I really enjoy having Emma in my class. I was lucky enough to have her both in 7th and 8th grade. Emma is a hard worker and very helpful. She is always willing to help other students when she is done with her work. Her positive attitude helps make the class a more enjoyable place to teach. And her history teacher adds, Emma is kind, smart, and has amazing worth ethic. She brings a positive influence to our class community, and I know she will always try her hardest and turn in her best work, no matter what, Emma, no matter what. Emma also focuses a lot of her time and energy into the school culture. She is currently in leadership, hand delights in planning, promoting, and executing the school activities. As a 6th-grade leadership student, she helped organize a jumpathon, where she and the other students involved top participants how to jump rope, if they didn't know, if they already, if they didn't already know, including the Chinese and double Dutch jumping styles. Emma also thoroughly enjoyed being a part of a complex theatrical production, which took most of the school year to prepare. Outside of school, Emma is very active. She plays team soccer and particularly enjoys the teamwork camaraderie and spirit. She cares for a multitude of her family, family's animals, including the cows, chickens, and dogs. Being with her immediate and extended family is a big part of Emma's life. Family spends a lot of active time together playing soccer, baseball, football, basketball, and frisbee. They also frequently go camping. Emma loves being in nature. Her parents say this about her, Emma is very kind and always willing to help others. She is a wonderful daughter and a great big sister. Emma is a natural leader, a fierce competitor, and a strong individual. We can always trust Emma to do the right thing and help out when needed. We agree, Emma Walker is one student who stands out as an excellent role model. We are proud to honor her with the title of student of the month.
All right, congratulations to both of you, and again, thank you to our readers, you did a great job. All right, on to the high schools, Casa and Petaluma Junior, or, sorry, Petaluma High, let's see who pops up first.
Josie, go ahead.
Sorry, my camera switched around. Casa Grande's first student of the month is Sekiko Pizorno. Sekiko is a senior at Casa Grande High School. Her favorite subjects are mathematics and physics. She will likely major in mechanical or electrical engineering because she loves solving problems and puzzles. Sekiko wrestles for Casa Grande and has a black belt in judo. She helps to teach at the DeLeon Judo Club and is currently preparing for an international judo tournament in Texas. Sekiko spent her freshman year abroad in France and founded a judo club in Paris that she attended weekly. Her sensei was a blind judoka, as well as a renowned author, and inspired her to believe that anything is possible if you put enough effort into it. Sekiko loves animals and has raised everything from 700 chickens to a leopard gecko. Her best friend is her sister Miyako, who is a great sparring partner, as well as a worthy movie-watching companion. Our second student of the month is Risa Tinsley-Green. Risa is also a senior at Casa Grande and plans to attend a four-year university next fall where she will study political science. She hopes to pursue a career as a public defender or a post-conviction litigation attorney in order to represent wrongfully convicted individuals. In high school, she has worked hard to better the community through petitioning the city council to implement the new Safe Crisis Response Program that went into effect this summer, served on the city council's Advisory Committee on Race and Police Relations, and has been a member of the local chapter of Diversify Our Narrative. In her free time, Risa enjoys spending time with her friends and family, hiking, camping, and swimming in the ocean.
Thank you, Josie, for reading. Congratulations, Sekiko and Risa, if you're out there, congratulations. You guys are so impressive, wow, this is amazing. Traveling during the school year, judo, changing the city for us, amazing, yeah, wrestling, all right. Yeah, yeah, all right, thank you. All right, moving on to Petaluma High School.
Hi, um, one second, okay. Alita Reyes, or, yeah, Alita Reyes is our first student of the month. She is actively involved in her school and in her community. She's a co-program captain of Petaluma High Cheer Team. She's been cheering on the team for four years, and she won a national championship with the team in 2020. She has been in the Hosa Club for four years and has held an officer position for all of those years. She is also involved in link crew and is a member of the Petaluma High Student Advisory Council. Outside of school, she is involved in the Petaluma Youth Commission and has earned congressional recognition for involvement in the commission. She volunteers for organizations like COTS Miracle League and the Oak Skilled Nursing Facility. During her time at Petaluma High, she has gone, gotten the opportunity to conduct research alongside the Buck Institute, an experience she thoroughly enjoyed. This summer, she was selected to represent Petaluma High School as the delegate for the 78th Session of American Legion Auxiliary California Girl State. She is a USC Bovard Scholar and was recently selected as a Quest Bridge finalist. In her free time, she enjoys reading and writing. Her future plans involve attending a four-year university on the East Coast and majoring in neuroscience while on her pre-med track. Her goal is to someday be a pediatric neurosurgeon and help as many people as she can. Her goal is to someday be a pediatric neurosurgeon surgeon and help as many people as she can. Um, our next Student of the Month is Lorelei Chris. Uh, Lorelei is a senior at Petaluma High School, where she has contributed academically, athletically, and socially. She has taken honors and AP classes since sophomore year and played varsity badminton in her junior year. Chris is in her second year of Link Crew and is a member of CSF and NHS. Her most recently acquired position is Vice President of a music club on campus. Chris's most lasting impact on Petaluma High School, however, will come from being editor-in-chief of the Trojan Tribune. Outside of school, Chris will soon begin tutoring at Petaluma Junior High. She is working on college applications and making the most of her last year with her friends. Chris graciously thanks her teachers, especially Redfield and Dosery, and her counselor, Mrs. Sterling, for helping her achieve this honor.
Amazing. You guys are so inspiring. Thank you so much for all you do for our community, and thank you to our reader as well. All right, moving on to San Antonio. Hi, Becky.
Hi there, everybody. Make sure everybody's here. Which, which are we doing first, Student of the Month or the Semester? So, um, hello, everybody. I'm Becky Lofton. I'm principal at San Antonio High School. And a number of years ago, probably twenty, San Antonio used to recognize a Student of the Semester, but for some reason stopped that. And in collaboration with Matthew and the board, we've re-initiated that, that practice this year. So thank you all for, for letting us bring this back so that we can recognize the amazing students at San Antonio. So this is our very first reinstituted Student of the Semester. And with that, I would like to introduce Ms. Tiana Gresbeck, one of the teachers at San Antonio, to make the presentation.
Thanks, Becky. Um, I am honored to introduce Nicholas Balon as our Student of the Semester at San Antonio High School. Nick became a part of our San Antonio family in the first semester of his freshman year. Nick is now a junior. He is up to date with his credits, and if he continues getting full credit from here on out, it's possible for him to complete his graduation requirements in the fall of twenty twenty-two, a whole semester early. Nick has shown that he is dedicated to graduating high school and is currently on his way to earning yet another solid three-point-five GPA for the grading period. In his last three years with us at San Antonio High School, we've been able to witness the positive transformations Nick has made, not only as a student, but as a young man. Nick consistently starts his day with a genuine good morning and ends it with, "Have a nice day." While Nick's attendance has always been solid, he hasn't shown much, he hadn't shown much interest and motivation with his academics. During his time with us, we have seen Nick mature, engage with school, show leadership qualities, and model positive behavior with his classmates. Nick has participated in various extracurricular activities throughout our school. He has participated in our school soccer team and running club. He has also joined one of our teachers in speaking at the Sonoma County Office of Education to be a teacher program, where he was part of a student panel discussion, which was offering advice and guidance to new teachers on how to be effective in a classroom. Nick Balon truly exemplifies what we look for at San Antonio High School. Academic focus, supporting and having compassion for his classmates, a solid graduation plan, and the maturity to accomplish his goals. Nick, we feel fortunate to have you as part of our San Antonio family and are proud of the role model you have become. We are pleased to recognize Nicholas Balon, a Student of the Semester at San Antonio High School.
Can I just say, Nick, I'm very proud of you. I remember you as a seventh grader at Kennelworth, and it just goes to show how amazing San Antonio is, and you and your family. Congratulations.
That's really impressive. I hope that you will apply for a student school board from the alternative schools. You sound like you would be an excellent candidate.
All right, moving on to the student report from San Antonio. Becky, we can't hear you.
Yeah, Becky, you're on mute.
You know, because I'm making noise in the background. I had to shut my mic off so you wouldn't hear me hooping and hollering. So Isabella, Isabella Asher and Isabel Martinez put together this wonderful presentation to report to the board on our activities thus far. Isabel Martinez isn't able to join us tonight, but Bella Asher is going to do a bang-up job for us. So Bella, take it away.
Hi, uh, my name is Bella Asher, and I will be giving a presentation today about San Antonio. Next slide, please. The following is our story. San Antonio High School, the home of the phoenix, was established fifty-six years ago. Our mission then and now is to provide a path towards high school graduation for Petaluma students who have struggled with education and comprehensive tools. Over the years, San Antonio has supported students with a variety of programs, including a high school diploma track, a GED preparation pathway, online learning opportunities, and a teen-parent education program that supported students throughout Sonoma County. In nineteen eighty-nine, San Antonio opened the daycare to better serve our teen parents. With declining teen pregnancy rates, our daycare has transformed into the teen center, which boasts a pool table, kitchen facilities, washer and dryer, and office space for mental health counseling and special education. This is the student snapshot, which is the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two student demographic.
Yeah, we, we lost your audio. Can you hear us, Bella? Bella, we lost your audio.
Oh, I'm sorry. That happened.
There, now we've got it. We got it back.
Okay, sorry. Uh, I'll, I'll just stop at the top, start at the top of the slide. Um, the student snapshot is the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two student demographics for our school. We began the school year with ninety-five students. Sixty-six percent being seniors, both first and second year. Thirty percent being juniors, four, four percent sophomores. Fifty-seven percent are Latino, thirty-four percent white, three percent Asian, two percent Black or African-American, two percent two or more races, one percent Native American, and one percent just declined the state. Twenty-two percent are special, special education. Sixty-four percent are socially or economically disadvantaged, and eight percent of these students are English learners. Next slide, please. So far this year, five students have graduated, and there are four more hoping to finish by the end of the grading period. During our last awards ceremony, twenty students earned one-hundred percent attendance recognition. Seventeen students earned honor roll. Twelve percent high, or twelve students high honor roll, and fourteen students on principal's honor roll, or a four-point-O GPA. We also recognized Yulita Mendez Rico as the student of the grading period. Next slide, please. In case you were wondering what makes San Antonio so special, these are some of the following things that you could identify as such. Our focus on relationships, our ability to find and build on individual strengths, social and emotional counselors, clubs and after-school programs like the Billiards Club, Running Club, and tutoring support, trauma-informed care and ACEs training and awareness, mentor, teacher, and student relationships, small class sizes that foster an environment for success, and, in my opinion, most importantly, San Antonio being a family that provides a safe and caring environment for our students. Next slide, please. During our first week of school, we had a back-to-school week of wellness. This included getting back into the habit of school, meaning we had an all-school assembly, a spring award ceremony where teachers got to award students from, give awards to students from the spring semester of last year, and have an introduction to teacher, teachers and classes. We also had team-building activities, like meeting with our mentor teachers, a school-wide scavenger hunt, tug-of-war, and juggling with a partner of our choice. Next slide, please. The following is a video that, um, myself and Isabel Martinez put together, interviewing some of the students at San Antonio to better, uh, understand their experience.
Uh, how has San Antonio helped you shape your vision of the future?
Um, it's helped me realize that I, I can actually be successful, because when I was at the regular high school, I thought, you know, like, I can't even graduate high school. What am I going to do with my life? But like, I can graduate high school, so it's, you know, there's that back-of-the-head thought.
Yeah, what are some of the benefits you found at San Antonio High School?
Well, there's no homework, which I'm sure everyone who lives, but it's actually really helped me because that was my issue. I wouldn't do my homework because I'd struggle by myself, and I can't focus on myself at home. So, um, having it be all in-person instruction really helps.
Okay, and what methods of teaching have you found really useful?
Um, just the fact that there's like really small classrooms here really helps. The teachers get to be one-on-one with the students a lot more, which is a lot more helpful than the big schools with thirty-two kids per classroom, so.
And how has San Antonio helped you shape your vision of the future?
To see the consequences, to see if I don't try, and the things that could happen when I try.
Okay, thank you.
When I was like at Casa, um, I was like, or actually, when I was at Casa, um, I was failing really badly, but coming here and getting the more extra credits, um, and especially having the no homework and like the extra help has helped a lot. Um, they're also just super nice here, which also helps with, um, the like, the like happy feeling of actually coming to school and like being sad that I'm missing it if I do miss it.
Okay, uh, what would you say to the other students who are struggling to come to San Antonio?
Um, that if you're thinking of coming, do it. Like, it was the best decision that I made. Um, there's lots of nice people here. Uh, and it, yeah, it's just super cool here.
What are some of the benefits you've found at San Antonio that you haven't found at other schools?
Uh, the support definitely with teachers, and not only that, but with classmates. Everyone here is really looking for you to succeed in graduation.
Okay, um, how has San Antonio changed your academic life and helped you improve your grades?
Um, I feel like, like I said, the teachers are really just here to help you. And not only that, they offer a lot more like SOS, you know? So, and they're, they're just there. They understand that life gets hard.
Okay, uh, how has San Antonio helped you shape your vision of your future?
Um, I feel like just talking with the counselor and being around other students, it's really helped me see what I want to do in life and how I do interact with others.
Okay, uh, how has San Antonio changed your academic life and helped you improve your grades?
Um, well, before, I didn't do any of my homework, you know? But now, San Antonio has given me the opportunity to have good grades as a student and show my intelligence in a different way than just homework.
Okay, uh, how has San Antonio helped figure, helped you figure out your goals?
Um, it has made it easier, because before, my goals was just to do homework, but like, I never even did that. And so now, my goal is just to like finish all my work, you know, so I could do that.
Um, what do you say to other students who are struggling about coming to San Antonio?
Oh, like, if you're struggling at a regular school, I would say San Antonio definitely is an alternative for people, and it's a lot easier to learn than a bigger school with so many more students.
All right, uh, how is San Antonio, uh, how has San Antonio helped you figure out your goals?
Um, mainly just having a close relationship with the teachers, um, having sit-down talks with them. They've kind of helped me figure out a plan for when I graduate and is pushing me towards the goals that I'm looking forward to as when I hit adult life.
All right, uh, what would you say to the other students who are struggling about coming to San Antonio?
Um, we don't bite.
Thank you. That is the end of the presentation. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Great. Did you have a question, Maddie? Go ahead. Maddie has a comment.
That was wonderful. You are very poised. And, um, and once again, please apply for the, uh, student, uh, board representative. I think that, you know, you guys really, uh, have a wonderful grasp on alternative education here in Petaluma City Schools, and you'd be a wonderful asset for us, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you for having us.
Moving on to introduction of our new Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Yes, so, um, both of the introductions tonight are of some very accomplished educators, so I have a lot to say. And introducing them. Settle in. So first, we're pleased to announce the selection of a new interim Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Maite Ateuri. Ms. Maite Ateuri will assume her interim duties on November first, twenty twenty-one. For the last few months, Maite has served as the K-12 Academic Coordinator for Petaluma City Schools. During this short time, she has started the facilitation process for our district's history, social sciences, adoption process, and Diversify Our Narrative work. For the past fifteen years, Maite has served as the Principal of El Verano Elementary School in Sonoma Valley Unified School Districts. For the past seven years, while serving as the Principal of El Verano, Maite has served as the adjunct faculty at Sonoma State University in the School of Education. At SSU, she is responsible for supporting the principal candidates as they complete their California State certification. For the past eleven years, while serving as the Principal of El Verano, Maite has served as the Director of District Programs, including Student Transfers, Preschool, and the Equity and Inclusion Task Force. For the past two years while serving as Principal of El Verano, Maite has served as the K-12 Summer School Principal and Coordinator. Maite's teaching experience includes elementary, middle, and high school. Maite has successfully led a school community as well as district programs during her tenure in the Sonoma Valley Unified School District. Some of these initiatives include implementing a community school model, opening a family resource center, reading and writing workshop, Exploratorium Science, Sonoma's first district preschool, starting Valley Vibes Orchestra, facilitating the Equity and Inclusion Task Force, implementing multi-tiered system of support, and positive behavior intervention and support strategies, the operating, and operating K-12 Summer School. Through this work, Maite has gained extensive experience facilitating site and district professional development on data analysis, EL strategies, equity and inclusion, and curriculum development. She wrote her district's technology plan, LCAP, EL master plan, and diversity recommendations. Maite is bilingual and bicultural in Spanish, trained in literacy and social emotional wellness, EL strategies, and she has strong facilitation skills. She has extensive experience with community relations, supporting students and families, counseling services, and expulsions. She has opened the first wellness center on a public school campus in SVUSD. Maite has been described as flexible, collaborative, and innovative. Maite is an effective communicator, creative, and a real-world, world problem solver. She has been recognized for her work to support the well-being and health of our community and for her innovation in school programming. Maite has served or is currently serving on many community organizations and boards, including the co-founder of Food for All, Comida para Todos, Shelter Manager for Emergency Operations Center, the Chair of the Sonoma Springs Municipal Advisory Committee, facilitator of the Equity and Inclusion Task Force in Sonoma Valley School District, member of Community Action Team, Sonoma Valley and County, member of the Community and Local Law Enforcement Task Force. Task Force of Sonoma County, Board Member and Member of Executive Board for La Luz Center, the member of the Todd Trust Team, Sonoma Community Fund, Board Member and Program Owner of Sonoma Valley Educational Foundation, Board Member and Board Member, Coordinating Council for Youth Development in Sonoma, and mentored two students in the Stand By Me Mentor Program. Maite's educational background includes being a candidate for a doctorate in educational leadership in the Educational Leadership Program from University of California Davis with an emphasis in community and school leadership. Maite received a master's degree from Sonoma State University in Educational Leadership with a thesis on parent participation in the Latino community. Maite received a Bachelor of Arts from Sonoma State University with an emphasis in Mexican-American Studies and Liberal Arts. We are so fortunate to have Maite's extensive experience and expertise in our district at this critical time. Please join me in welcoming Maite as our Interim Assistant Superintendent of Student Services in Petaluma City Schools.
Thank you very much. I'm honored and very excited to be here and really happy to support the goals of Petaluma City Schools. And just thank you for the amazing welcome and the long introduction. So thank you all. I'm really honored to be here. So.
We're happy to have you. I'm just wondering when Maite has time to sleep because that's a lot.
I just wanted to say thank you to Liz as well for everything. She's kind of been my training wheels the last few days. So I really appreciate all the time you've taken. And thank you to the superintendent as well. So thank you all.
Thank you, Liz. We're gonna miss you. Yeah. Thank you so much for everything you've done for us, honestly.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All right, Jason.
So our next announcement, Ashley, are you finding? Our next announcement is Melissa Becker. There she is. Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
So we're pleased to announce the selection of a new principal for McNear Elementary School, Melissa Becker, who will assume her duties on November 18th, 2021. Melissa received her bachelor's degree in sociology from UCLA and her teaching credential and her master's degree in elementary education from Loyola Marymount University. Melissa received her administrative credential from Sonoma State University. Melissa started her career as an elementary teacher for 10 years. As a teacher, Melissa took on many duties, including teacher-in-charge, gate coordinator, Title I coordinator, mentor teacher, and program quality review leadership team member. While teaching in Connecticut, she was the founding teacher and curriculum developer for REACH, a 15-month program for underprivileged students aiming for college that continues to thrive 25 years after it was established. Melissa jumped into administration as an assistant principal at Brookhaven Middle School in Sebastopol Unified School District, and then as an assistant principal at Miller Creek Middle School in the Miller Creek School District. At Brookhaven, Melissa served as the district gate coordinator, language arts curriculum task force chairperson, and the academic intervention coordinator. At Miller Creek, Melissa served as the star testing coordinator, language arts assessment coordinator, academic intervention coordinator, and she developed language arts tutorial classes. Melissa concurrently worked as a national reading trainer for Ashlock Consulting. For the past 17 years, Melissa has served as a principal at Meadow School in the WA School District in Petaluma. In 2009, she was awarded Sonoma County Elementary Principal of the Year. She has written numerous successful PEF grants with her teacher teams over the years, including grants for innovative PE equipment, a school garden, hands-on science curriculum, musical instruments, and confronting discrimination. A pivotal grant in 2015 sparked the start of one of the first maker rooms in an elementary school. She partnered with the County Office of Education to create a space specifically designed to engage students in hands-on learning that simultaneously teaches STEAM and interpersonal relationships. For the past six years, Melissa has run the non-technical side of the program where students use everyday objects such as corks, rubber bands, paperclips, Legos, blocks, or marbles to complete a team challenge that requires planning, conversation, grit, and creativity. Throughout the years, Melissa has enjoyed watching students become builders, problem solvers, and confident explorers ready to take on the challenges inside and outside the classroom. For the past five years, in addition to her role as principal, Melissa has served as an adjunct professor in the Maker Space Certification Program at Sonoma State University. Melissa is an active member of the ILC, Instructional Leadership Corps, which is a collaboration of California Teachers Association, Scope, and the National Board Resource Center at Stanford University, where the work focuses on educator-driven professional development. Melissa is a teacher at heart, and she is passionate about opening doors for students and engaging students and families in their education. As principal, Melissa leads by example, seeking moments to authentically engage students, teachers, and staff to explore varied academic and social learning opportunities. One of her favorite times with students is when she rolls out her rainbow unicorn-themed music cart to the playground during lunch on Disco Fridays to play music for the students and have a dance party. It's a perfect opportunity at the end of the week for students, teachers, and faculty to have some fun. Melissa also admits that while she's a terrible basketball player, she has coached in her mural basketball teams for years, showing students that the value in an experience is not always about achieving perfection, but in learning and giving your best effort. Melissa believes in doing her part to make a difference, so she serves on two boards, the Fabulous Women and the Rwanda School Project. The Fabulous Women work to inspire and support our community members and have brought Hualuma and Festival of Trees to Petaluma. Melissa traveled to Rwanda four times and is actively engaged in offering an education to 160 students at the Roamagana. Thank you so much, which helped, which her family helped establish. Melissa has been a Petaluman for 24 years and lives with her husband Ben and two children Hannah and Cole. Cole is currently a senior at Casa Grande High School. An avid runner, she has run 150K, but prefers much shorter distances. She is always up for new challenges and enjoys learning with others. We are so fortunate to be able to bring Melissa's extensive experience, expertise, and excitement to McNear at this critical time. Please join us in welcoming Melissa as the new principal at McNear Elementary School.
Thank you so much, Jason. That was really nice. Thank you. I'm very excited to start at McNear and figure out what everyone's vision is there and where they want to go next. I'm really excited to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Looks like Tony is up next, right?
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to give this presentation and overview of the ESR grant and the expenditure plan. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan, or ARP Act, which was signed into law on March 11th, 2021. The main source of funding for districts such as Petaluma City Schools in the ARP Act is the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund, or ESR 3. ESR 3 requirements include development of a board-approved expenditure plan that involves community engagement and a minimum of 20% of the total allocations to be used for learning loss mitigation, social emotional needs of students, with the remainder to be used for items in line with the CDC guidelines for the reopening and operations of school facilities to maintain the health and safety of students, educators, and staff. Districts have flexibility to include community input interactions included in other planning documents. These include the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, known as ELO, the Local Accountability Plan, LCAP, Learning Newity and Attendance Plan, and the COVID-19 Prevention Plan. We also used the ELO and ESR 3 surveys to support in the development. In addition, we also reached out to various organizations for consultation, such as the Community Advisory Committee, the North Bay LGBTQI Families, and the Community Health Initiative for Petaluma Area, or CHIPPA. We plan to have ongoing conversations with these and other community organizations in support of our plan. We are expected to receive a little over $4.2 million. We plan to allocate just over $2 million for the continuous and safe in-person learning, and about $2.2 million to address the lost instructional time. For continuous and safe in-person learning, we plan to continue to maintain the in-person learning and safety through such things as securing safety supplies, COVID-19 testing, vaccination of information and campaigns, training staff, sanitation through safety protocols, COVID-19 mitigation strategies, and contact tracing. In addition, we plan to upgrade our ventilation and HVAC systems, as well as other equipment and supplies for student activities and athletics, and use funds for any short-term staffing or partnership to address the above list. For lost instructional time, we plan to expand and enhance the learning supports by extending instructional learning time before and after-school interventions and tutoring, implement data-driven systems to identify learning and opportunity gaps, and integrated student support to address other barriers to learning, such as social, emotional, and mental health supports, upgrade our technology to provide students with new relevant devices, but also high-speed internet access, ensure that we have a responsive credit recovery process and options to improve graduation and college eligibility. Training and support will also be important for our school leaders and staff to enhance their capacity around instructional strategies, social-emotional learning, engagement, and data. ESR 3 funds are available for obligation through September 30th, 2024. They are based on the proportion that each district receives under Title I, Part A of the Elementary and Secondary Act of 1965. And the ESR 3 plan is a living document that is expected to go through various updates. Therefore, engagement with our stakeholders will be continuous. Finally, as I observe still, how the pandemic has changed many of our lives and throughout our country, and no matter the good intentions of our responses to the pandemic has been, division has found a way to take hold in many parts of our nation's communities. So it's easy to be cynical sometimes. Things don't always go our way, and that can leave us frustrated and disheartened. This plan, almost every plan that we are fortunate enough to build with our community, is an opportunity to build stronger bridges. It isn't just about the money we receive, but also about the community we get to strengthen and continually build through this process. I believe our collective goodwill towards one another and willingness to work to better our students' lives through this planning process and future plans will be what binds us stronger than anything that might divide us. And I believe if we work really hard together and are kind to one another, amazing things will happen here. That's why I look forward to keeping the board up to date with what we are doing and working with our community partners on all of our plans to do what's right for our community and the students we serve. Thank you.
I love that quote at the end. Anyone have any questions or comments for Tony? I, yeah, it was. For how long, Ellen? I had a question about the credit recovery. Like, how, what, how many students are we looking at that needs to recover credits?
Yeah, so I can probably give you an update after this year. Currently, I think there's about 90 at Casa Grande. Petaluma High, I want to say about 40, or I'm sorry, Petaluma High School, about 45. But I can get the exact numbers. I know that they're working on building the credit recovery right now with Agenuity and Apex, as well as some after-school classes that they'll be offering as well. I think moving out in the outer years, I'm hoping that we'll have less and less students needing credit recovery. So the goal isn't to have a lot of kids in credit recovery. The goal is really, what are we going to do to ensure that students are passing the courses they're currently in and reducing the number of credit recovery and actually increasing enrichment courses that can provide them acceleration or go-ahead courses?
Do we know why there's so many kids?
I'm sorry?
Do we know why there's 90 or 130 something?
Yeah. From my understanding, I think during the pandemic, there were a lot of students in the lower grades, ninth and 10th grade, who are currently sophomores and juniors now that struggled during the pandemic. A lot of them, I think, didn't show up or just struggled in the classrooms and didn't get the grades they needed to pass.
Is some of this, like over the course of the year, going to look at why those students failed their classes, lost credits?
Yeah. I think as part of, when we go through the part of the equity study that we're doing and a part of reviewing the, like, our course lists, one aspect is our guidance alignment piece and looking at other barriers that may be preventing kids from passing classes such as social emotional needs that might need to be addressed first. As we look at that data, I think those things can help us tell us exactly why. We can make conjectures and we can make assumptions, but it's one of those things where I think with greater systems that we'll be able to build, especially with this one-time funding, then we can have a better understanding of what those might be and also put systems in place that will mitigate those things.
Anyone else? I do see a piece in here about the professional development. I love the multi-tiered system of support, the positive behavior. Is this going to be new? I mean, I know we've had different aspects that I'm like looking at both you guys. I know we've had like different aspects of this in the past, right? Trauma-informed training and cultural responsive systems. It's just, is this going to build on that? Or are at least like the multi-tiered system and the positive behavior, are those new to our district?
I'm hoping, yeah, I'm hoping to build on what we've already done, but also build sustainability. So a lot of times professional development is one time and then it disappears, another professional that comes on. So we really want to be systematic. What are our challenges that we're facing? And what can we do well now? What trainings do we need to build capacity? And then how do we follow up and follow through to make sure that there's continuous training and updated information in regards to the training that they receive? So that the systems that we put in place can be sustainable. And whether our leadership changes or not, the systems will still be there to support the students that we serve.
Anyone else? Not even Maddie? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tony. So we're gonna bring that back for our vote later, I believe. Okay. All right. Moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. We're gonna open the chat. We've already read the policy. Please put your first and last name if you want to make a comment about a non-agendized item.
I think we can close the chat.
Do we have any public comments on non-agendized items? One? Okay. You have four minutes.
Hey, everyone. It's Megan Kelly. Thank you so much. As you guys know, I have two kids at Grant, kindergarten and second grade, and they're having a great year so far. So thank you. I know that you guys are starting to look at the calendar for future years. And upcoming in the next couple of weeks, we have our conference weeks. We have two weeks of shortened days in November, and then we have that again in March. And my understanding is that this has been the practice in PCS for, I don't know, 20 or 30 years to have these conference weeks. And I'm just wondering if it's time to look at other models for this. The conference weeks, you know, for my daughter in kindergarten, she'll be leaving school at 11:40 for two weeks straight. And is this really best practice for children? You know, it's hard enough that we've transitioned back to school after everything in the past, you know, year and a half. And so having kids in school for their you know, year and a half, and so having kids in school for their standard day is really important right now. Other districts have other models of, you know, taking one day for conferences, or I know, I think in Napa, they do, they compensate teachers in other ways or move things around so that there can be two nights for conferences. It's a hardship on parents to have these shortened weeks. And then additionally, the spring conference week, it's actually an optional conference, and it's a teacher discretion, although parents can request, but, you know, not every child has a conference in the spring, and yet every child is affected by the shortened week. And I want to say that this year, I didn't go back and look, but I think it, the conference week backs up to spring break and then the fire days. And so we're talking about three weeks of disruption there in the middle of the spring. So I just, I'm just putting it out there before you get too deep in the, in the calendar to maybe look at these and see, are there other models that are, you know, best for kids and more workable for working parents out there? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Megan.
All right, thank you, Megan. Do we have any other comments?
That was it.
Okay. All right, next up. Report on activities and correspondence of school board members over the last two weeks. Week of the administrator celebration, Padilla Luma Ad Hoc Community Advisory Committee, Padilla Luma Blocks for Community Development Meeting, NAACP Education Committee Meeting, Circle Up Stakeholder Meeting on Palo Lane Nature Preserve, K-12 Curriculum Committee, and Kenworth Junior High School eighth-grade girls' basketball game. Anyone have any comments on any of those that you'd like to share? No? Okay. All right, so now we have comments from the public on the consent agenda. So same deal, please put your first and last name in the chat and the subject that you would like to comment on.
Okay, I think we can close the chat. We have one, Sal Andropoulos, talking about item 11.3.2 SR3 expenditure plan. Hi, Sal.
Hello, Sal Andropoulos here, Dave and Pronouns, with North Bay LGBTQI families. So just regarding the updates that we heard for the SR3, the pandemic response fund plans, I'm thankful for the presentation that we heard from Tony tonight, and just wanted to submit a comment in support of the work that PCS administrators and board members are doing to center equity and inclusion in addressing learning outcomes and the social-emotional impacts of the pandemic. And just wanted to share some of the input that we provided in this process, and we'll, you know, summarize all of it here, but some of the, some of the main points just kind of were around things like, you know, particularly for groups, including LGBTQIA-plus students who already experience significant mental health disparities that have been exacerbated through the, you know, social isolation of the pandemic, as well as BIPOC students who've often reported feeling, you know, unsupported or unsafe on campus and who are also likely to have been disproportionately impacted on many levels by the pandemic, as reflected in a lot of nationwide data on COVID impacts on BIPOC households. It's just critically important to utilize pandemic response funds to support these students academically and on a social-emotional level by, you know, incorporating things into the PCS pandemic response plans, like curriculum updates related to the Fair Act, or LGBTQ history, or the California Healthy Youth Act, which requires health and sex education to be LGBTQIA-plus inclusive, as well as ethnic studies coursework, which has been established within PCS and that I hope will be expanded to multiple grade levels, you know, much in the way that Santa Rosa City Schools has been doing with ethnic studies curriculum, in taking these steps, PCS is supporting the academic and social-emotional well-being of marginalized student groups who have experienced some of the greatest mental health and economic impacts of the pandemic, which all affect learning outcomes. And particularly when the district takes the additional necessary step of investing in the professional development, that has been, you know, that we've been discussing in many meetings, that it's, that is truly an essential part of implementing these curriculum updates in a culturally conscious and safe manner. In doing that, the district is taking really significant steps to create inclusive learning environments for all students. And we know that research clearly shows that students have better academic outcomes when they can see their identities reflected in their learning environment, and really, all students benefit when, when inclusion and equity are centered at school. And, yeah, it's also very great to hear that there, as Tony described, there's going to be data, I think, you know, later this year that will help us to understand other factors that may be driving some of the learning outcomes that we're seeing. And so we, you know, our group, we're looking forward to just continuing to partner and be in conversation with PCS regarding how to best sort of utilize these funds or pursue other measures in support of our students, and we're very thankful for, for the work that you all are doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Sal.
Thank you, Sal. Do we have any other public comments? Nope, that's it. All right. Okay, so approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
A second.
All right. Questions, comments? Go ahead.
I have a couple. For Jason about the tutoring, let's see, 11.1.3 for academic tutors from Sonoma State. I think this is great. I don't know whether we've done this to this extent before. I'm really excited about it, but I did have some questions. Just, you know, basic implementation. Does it go to you or to Jason?
I think, I think it could go to both of us. So this, we brought this, I just remember just jumping in because we brought this, I think it was last year or the year before.
This is a renewal.
I think it was last year. It's a renewal. And what happened last year, you know, online, we had some tutors through Sonoma State, they're getting educational credit to do it. They came on Zoom, supporting students over at McDowell. They were sort of piloting it over at McDowell. And my understanding is a continuation, it's a continuation, it's a renewal of that same MOU to continue working with students over at McDowell, Sonoma State students. We'd love to expand it, but right now, that, we're still pandemic, and we're, it's just a continuation of that, that same MOU.
Oh, so then it's only at McDowell? It won't be for any other?
For right now. Yeah, we'd like to expand it, but for right now, that's where they're at.
Okay. So who is the liaison that coordinates the student teachers and, or the students? They're not student teachers yet, right?
Our principal, Samuel Martinez, has been involved.
Oh, so he'd be the liaison? Okay. Okay, good. Well, hopefully we can expand it because it's desperately needed. So I was excited that that might be more. I don't know how many students are in this class, how much it could be expanded, but it goes along with our board goals of working with Sonoma State and the JC.
Maybe, Jason, you could talk to Samuel about how many students are impacted right now, Sonoma State and McDowell students, and the possibility of expanding it.
Yeah, I can, I can find out. I did see some of your, your questions on that. I can get that information and bring that back, some of those more detailed questions about the program and the possibilities for expanding it.
Or just possibilities, yeah. I mean, these are just basic.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Should I go on or?
Go on, Maddie.
I had a question about the gas piping replacement project, the addendum. And Chris isn't here.
I talked to Chris about it today.
So I wasn't, I thought we had done it?
So we did, we did not bring any architectural fees for the gas piping. So this is, this is the architectural cost only for, because we have to pass DSA, we need DSA approval, the architectural plans. We did it very quickly because clearly when there's a gas leak, you have to, you got, you got to fix this. So these are, we're now bringing the architectural plans that were drawn to pass DSA approval to get the, to fix the pipe, the gas pipes at Casa Grande High School.
Okay, so they've already done everything. It's just, this is the paperwork that needed to be approved.
Correct.
And my only other one, sorry, is about 11.3.1 Educational Services, the obsolete instructional material approval. I just kind of was glancing through the list, and there were, almost all the books were controversial subjects. You know, things like banned books, abortion, white supremacy, civil rights. So I just wanted to know, was it, were they pulled because they were out of date? Are they being replaced?
There, there, books that I, that are deemed obsolete, some of them are between 14 to 43 years old, so the publication is really out of date and no longer relevant or no longer accurate in regards to what the, the books may be about. And the sites determine that, that they, you know, they could be unusable, like, they're kind of destroyed and they're not able to use them because they're so old and they're falling apart, or they're, or they're just out of, out of date or out of print or not being used. So, so they, so I guess it's been a part of the process, just the process of disposing them when they're that old or unable to be used, from my understanding.
So it's just coincidence?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that could be, they could be damaged to the point where they're not able to use? 2007 is about 14 years old. I can see and find out if those books are being replaced for, to a newer, newer dated materials or published date for some of those. Yes.
The banned books, that really disturbs me that they're gone. I know it's, they're old, so are they going to be replaced with more up-to-date books, I would hope?
Yes, I can find out about that.
Breaking Free From Partner Abuse, Voices Of Battered Women. I don't think it matters when that's published because, you know, it, coping with confrontation and encounters with the police, I mean, some of these are just...
They're interesting titles for...
But then, like, when you look at the banned books, like, like, look at, like, the subheading, and it was, they're, they're really old?
Well, I understand that. I would just like to know if those kinds of books are being replaced with more up-to-date?
I think the general concern is whether there's any political motivation behind the selection of these particular books.
Well, it's, I don't know. Yeah, I just, you know.
Yes, I can, I can go and find out.
It also looks like they were just going through that part of the library, like, at the call numbers? I don't know. Like, they're in the 300s.
Well, I also know that, you know, sometimes books are weeded because no one's checked it out since, you know, and that's, that's one of the reasons why they weed them. I'm just, I share with Maddie, and also Caitlin mentioned, that we're concerned that some of these books seem to be very political in nature, and we're just curious as to why they're being, I mean, the banned books, that, those are old title, old dates, but I would like to see, I mean, I think that's pretty important as an English teacher.
And it doesn't look like, I mean, every book about the KKK or socialism or whatever is being removed. Do you know what the process typically is for, for, like, weeding out books? Like, what is a weeding log? If you could explain that first.
I mean, in general, I know that, you know, the schools go through an inventory to make room for other inventories, and then they'll weed through books that either, you know, are old, outdated, no longer usable because of their condition, and then send them to, for board approval for disposal. If they, typically, if we could, you know, sell them for the price we paid them for or close to that, then we could use that money for other things. But sometimes they're just beyond, beyond repair or beyond able to, for sale, and so it's just putting them up for disposal or donations to other places. But I can find out maybe the reasons why, and if these books are going to be replaced or, or titles or topics are, will be replaced.
That would be very, well, National Party Platforms published in 1956, that could probably go.
Some of them, 1978, '85, so.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about anything?
So is somebody proposing to pull this or not? Or are we good with the answer?
You know, I don't think we need to pull it. I'm just really curious as to, and I'm sure we can vote on it and then still find the answers. What do you think, Maddie?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make something with, to remember also, you know, that those, the political motivations, I don't know, are the topics are controversial, they, they're used in classes all the time, but everything is, but they're used in classes all the time in English and social studies. Given that these are old, they need to be replaced with something accurate and, and up-to-date.
All right, any other comments about the books or anything else? I had a question. No? Okay. About the COVID, an item 11.4, the special services agreement, one, under number two, price and payment, it says contractor will bill student and staff's health insurance for the COVID-19 testing program?
Yes. For the district, there is no payment that we need to make. We just run student health insurance, and if students don't have it, they can still access the service. But that's just the way HQ Esoterics works, is they, they bill through the family insurance directly, and the district doesn't have to, doesn't have a payment due to HQ Esoterics.
Which I believe is the same that Color is using, Color is doing right now for us. So just to front-load this, this item as well, and Liz, feel free to jump in.
Brian Dufour, our COVID-19 coordinator, you know, and his, his, his small, fierce team, very small team, and then, and our school nurses have done a fantastic job of getting us this far with, with the testing. But really, we're, we have been exploring this for a while, and so bringing on HQ Esoterics or Health Quest Esoterics, HQ Esoterics, is essentially bringing this outside contractor to come in, so when we have spikes, they're able to, to staff up, to come in. It's not a cost to the district, it's run through private insurance, which is free to this, free to students, and if you don't have health insurance, it's, it's all covered by state COVID-19 dollars. And they will be doing, they own their own lab, so it also will reduce, the, the whole goal is to get testing, faster testing, and much more scalable testing. We don't have the capacity, we're, we're not, we are not a testing facility, we're a school district. They are a testing facility. They own their own lab. They're, what they're telling us, they, they also do, they do the testing for California State Universities, the CSUs, so they have lots of experience. Brian's done some reference checks on them as well. We feel pretty confident moving forward with, with this organization. They will do PCR testing, they're, they've quoted as 24-hour turnaround because it's their own lab. They will also do rapid testing for us, so when there, when there are no symptoms, we can get in there and do rapid testing, which is what we've, I know a lot of community members have been asking for, and this is what's going to get us to that, that point of being able to do rapid testing and quick, you know, for students or staff who do have symptoms, 24-hour PCR testing, which is much better than, than where we're at right now. So that's, the whole goal is quicker, faster turnaround, scalable testing.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't, like, a cost to families once they access it. Thank you for explaining that. And also, I appreciate you updating the COVID, COVID plan, looks like there's an addendum in here, so.
Thanks to Brian, yes.
Yeah, amazing. All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Caitlin? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Comments from the public on action items. Same deal, we're going to open the chat for a minute or two. If you have a comment on one of, or on the action item, please put your first last name in the chat.
I think we can close the chat.
All right. So, approval of the contract for interim assistant superintendent of student services. If we vote no, does that mean Liz gets to stay? Stuck with us, Liz?
I'll let you work that out with her.
No, we are going to miss you, but we are very happy to have my take. And thank you so much for taking the time with her. So, all right.
I'll move to approve the contract for interim assistant superintendent of student services for the 2021-22 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Comments from the public on discussion slash information items. We have one of. And while we have the chat open, Matthew, do you want to talk about what this is going to look like, since there's no document attached?
Sure. And I did share it with Ashley, if you do want to, if we do want to at least put it up on the screen so people can see it, even though it's a rough draft at this point. So just for people who are in the, essentially, the idea is the board has requested to do board office hours out at school sites. We created a working document just to sort of get some ideas going, so that it's not just, we keep, you know, bring up the discussion. We have some concrete actions. Board members have added, you know, clearly, it's either one or two board members at a time will go out to a site. The idea is that every single site will have a fall date and a spring date. The fall date, they'll alternate between, it'll be one morning from typically 7:30 to 9:30, where board members are there, so that parents and staff and teachers can stop by and just check in with a couple, one or two board members. And then in the spring, there'll be a second date. And again, it'll alternate before school and after school. Talk about anything that community members, teachers, staff, students, parents want to talk about with board members. We will take this draft, and then in our newsletters, we'll be pushing it out. We'll also put it on our website so that people know when the board, the office hours are at each site. Principals can advertise this to their community, so they'll have a clear date. I think as I went through the document, the only date that we may, it looks like we may need to change is for Petaluma High School. We don't have anyone signed up for Friday, December 10th. So unless Caitlin or anybody else here can do that date, we'll have to just change it.
It didn't work for anybody.
Okay.
As far as I know, it didn't work for anybody.
December 10th.
Okay, so you're going to...
So, again, this is why it's a draft document. It's a working document. We'll change it, and then we'll see if that new date will work for anybody. And otherwise, it looks pretty good. If it's all filled in, good job.
Yeah, thank you. I know, look at us, doing our homework. And do you anticipate that this will be sent out through Parentswear, through the regular newsletters and things?
It'll get sent out through the district-wide newsletter that we do, and it'll get sent out through site newsletters, and it'll be on our website.
Oh, you saw one with three? I think that I had asked if there was, like, an alternate, and we can just decide. I don't see if a three you want.
Right there, there was.
Oh, okay. Well, between now and then, who knows?
Yeah.
Well, you said you know.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks for getting that put together.
Do you want to look at that December 10th date? Do you want me to just, I can change it on the doc and share it back up?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know. We need subs, need subs everywhere. All right. Oh.
Yeah, oh, sorry, yes, let's close the chat.
Let's close the chat. I forgot about the chat. Okay, thank you, Ashley. Future business, ooh, look at us. Cool City Challenge, which we were just awarded, right? The million dollars.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Caitlin, go ahead.
Petaluma was one of three cities that won a million-dollar grant for the Cool City Challenge, and so I believe it's a million dollars over two years. And so, we will have a presentation from them in November, December, about ways that PCS can partner with that effort. But it's really cool. We, I think it's Petaluma, Irvine, and Los Angeles were the three picked. So we're with some big cities. It's kind of a big deal. So, kudos to everyone that made that happen. Yeah.
Thank you to our block leaders up in here, right? Maddie and Caitlin. Caitlin?
So Caitlin...
I'm saying I'm a block leader.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were.
So Caitlin, can I work with you on finding someone, somebody who could come, maybe potentially multiple people who come and do a presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Great. Ed Services Update, PD Curriculum Program. Ooh, put you to work, Tony. Okay. And then the trustee area redistricting, that's ongoing.
Right, it'll be November 30th, Tuesday, November 30th, and then Saturday, December 11th.
All right.
So it's Tuesday, November 30th, 6:00 p.m., sort of like a normal board meeting time, but we'll just be talking about redistricting. And then Saturday, December 11th, 2:00 p.m., right after the PCS holiday fun run.
Do we know, is there a way for the public to give input to the demographer besides the hearings?
Members of the public could always send an email, send me an email, or a board member an email, and say, sharing some feedback, some input. Right now, it's really, the hearings are, the next one as well will be pre-map. And then we'll have about a three-week pause, and then we'll get into, here's the first draft of a map. We'll get as much feedback as we can. But if anyone wants to send me an email or a board member an email, we can get the pre-map feedback to the demographer. I'm happy to send it over to them. Saturday, December 11th, we're tentatively scheduled for 2:00. Yeah.
So back to the, to the dates or the process for the trustee area redistricting. So when they bring that first map, will we have public comment at the same time? So we don't have three separate meetings? I mean, we don't have the map presented and then have public comment at another meeting and then, okay, so it's all at that time? And then, so there'd be the three meetings, and at that point, people can comment about each one of them?
Correct. So the two, so November 30th will be the first post-map hearing, right? So that one, we'll have the maps out, we'll share the maps, we can get feedback from the general public. Again, if we make tweaks or changes, we'll come back on the Saturday, December 11th, again, to give public comment. Then Tuesday, December 14th, again, we'll show the maps. Potentially, they changed a little bit because we're tweaking and taking feedback all along. And then the goal is December 14th to finalize the maps and put it into place before the next election. That's within our 90-day safe harbor.
Thank you.
All right, so, I'm going to report out on items heard in closed session. Case number 363-224617. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the, will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the 2021 to 2022 school year. Conditions above subject review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance. Do we go on it now? Okay. I think so, yeah, we have to vote on this.
I move to approve the suspended expulsion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Case number 361-225350. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in the district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the 2021 to 2022 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance. We get a motion to approve the suspended expulsion.
I move to approve the suspended expulsion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and with that, we are...
Hey, Jen, just, sorry, real quick, before we adjourn, just want to, again, I know we've been talking around about, but it's a bittersweet meeting. I just want Liz to go. You've been such an incredible asset to Petaluma City Schools, moving us closer to restorative practices, starting the district-wide diversity, equity, and inclusivity work, stellar member of cabinet. And I just, I can't say enough, we are truly going to miss you, Liz. And I just want you to know, we wish you all the best in your new district and the new endeavor. So thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you've done for Petaluma City Schools.
Thank you all. I'm going to miss being here, and I'm just going to stop there. Be greatly missed. All right, and with that, we are going to adjourn at 7:45.